All right, we will call the October 8, 2013 meeting of the Acton School Committee to order at this time. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I'd like to mention that when we get to Item 10.4, New Business, there's a little more information around that tomorrow. So we'll discuss it then.
Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? If not, let's move on to the approval of the minutes, reading of the minutes of our September 10 meeting.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the reading of September 10.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes, the reading of the minutes of September 10 as printed. Any discussion? There are none, all those approve. Special meeting, now let's have the minutes, approval of the minutes of our special meeting as of October 1, 2013.
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the meeting, the special meeting, October 1.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any comments from the public tonight? Quiet public?
Paul's way back there, I don't know why he can't join us.
I'm cutting out early, I've got another meeting tonight.
Okay, let's go on then to Communications and Correspondence. Carrie? No, I don't think so, okay. There is, there is some correspondence here from Joy, but I think that will come up under Number 10 on the new business. So we'll wait until we get to the other side. And let's move on to reports and we will begin with the Superintendent's Report.
I want a little addition to it that you have not seen. I was out for long with my Superintendent's Report that I delivered electronically. Superintendent's Report for the 10-8 Board Meeting on September 26, the Vision Committee, which is better called the Acton Education Planning Committee, meant to finalize the vision statement for the Acton School. A product of their combined labors has been included in tonight's package. With the mission and vision ready, now the SMARTPals are being accumulated from all stakeholders and will be available to the Board of Education prior to the November Board Meeting. Tricia and I gave the teachers an update on this activity at the 10-2 Teachers Meeting. My message to the teachers was attached. Now a comment about Central Office. Kim Oliver, who is here tonight for the first time in the history of the board. Kim Oliver and Crystal Lambert have enthusiastically started the new positions at the Central Office. Both Diane Bellanger and Donna Micho have offered them excellent guidance and a 10 and a six-hour in district training session provided by Northern Data Systems enabled the new team to get the first payroll and warrants completed seamlessly. We actually completed another warrant since this comment. It's going to be available for the board to review and sign the checks to. Andrew Braeger and his committee have interviewed four qualified candidates for the open custodial position so a finalist will be offered to the board for acceptance at the October Board Meeting. Thanks also Andrew and June Wood for handling the pavement sealer buckets and brooms on Saturday 21st to complete half of the parking lot at a fraction of the cost of the outside country. Thanks again Andrew.
Thanks.
Thank you for us too. The Sunshine on the Branch and his all-day, all-day student outing at Camp Nutter on Friday, September 27. The only wrinkle in this expertly planned day, well this is digital cameras failure to take more than 11 shots of the students' activities due to an overfilled memory card. We're a victim of technology, we're only as good as our technology. Another event, I don't know if Mr. Neal is here tonight, but our students proved they could evacuate the building during a recent drill in a fast but orderly manner. Within seven minutes' time, they were all down in Dick Neal's field and maintained a respectful demeanor. I'm sure that Dick would invite them back anytime. Beautiful day, the students did well. Tricia and I are pleased to recommend Kristen Galpo, visiting teacher and holder of Assistant Principal Certificate as our stipended instructional strategist who will be gathering and analyzing the assessment results and facilitating the implementation of standards-based learning. And then there is more discussion in Tricia's report about this very issue. It was a slight adjustment in the amendment to the Item 10.4 on the agenda. Visit stat issue again. So the only other thing that I want to mention, and I'm just going to pass this out as a proof, Carlin I report. It's my first attempt at a budget preparation timeline for this district and this school. What I like to do is work with both Michelle and Jen, I put it down, Hall. And work with our selectmen.
And Paul Warren.
And Paul Warren, he's there too, so hopefully there's an extra copy for Mr. Tracy. Hoyang is the person?
Hoyang.
Close enough.
Hoyang, okay. All right. What I'm trying to do is make sure that we have all stakeholders for this, these events that are going to go on from a budgeting perspective, all in the skull with our orders going at the same time and that we're all comfortable with what our mission is and what our plan is to complete a budget on a time and basis and get it passed. So, you know, timeline too soon to start on this project. So this is my first take at looking at it, but the dates need to be verified as to Talent Hall and Finance and Warrant Committee assistance. And the reason I wanted to get started on it pretty quickly is, I have a wonderful, pardon my personal thing, but my aunt, who is the matriarch of the elderly, who turns 90 on the 19th of March. I promised her I'd fly out of the seat. I don't have to walk around with a seat this way. If there's a meeting on the 18th, I fly early morning on the 19th. Somehow. But you do plan ahead. So that's what my report is. And my supervisors of the departments have excellent course. At your discretion.
All right, well, let's move on to Number 6, which is Progress Monitoring Reports. The Strategic Plan Report. I think Ken has already given us a little bit of that. Does anybody have anything to add to what Ken has already done? As far as the, I was at that meeting as well and it went very well. I know the vision was finalized and now we're going to be thinking about the implementation, working towards that. Okay, Administrative Reports, we'll start with Principal.
I guess this is the new format, so I'd like to know how you'd like me to proceed.
Anyway, she has.
Did I miss one?
She provided her report to you electronically.
Right, but we don't have a printed copy of it tonight.
You can make copies.
I can make more.
So. About 100 times a day if you're me.
Well, I know.
It's unfortunate.
You, I know.
If I let a day go by, I pay for it. So, well, I will just, you know, quickly review the key points of the early release day last Friday as well as last teacher leader, teacher meeting. You know, it's all about moving us forward as a district. And it really is multi-pronged, from the CPR training that another 15 or 18 of our staff members got on Friday afternoon to some staff members heading over to Sanford. I've mentioned before that I'm coordinating with Dan Goldsberry what's being offered at Sanford on early release and workshop days. So some of our staff went over there to hear about a computer program called Educate. I'm trying to see, a lot of schools are buying Educate for a way of communicating grades and things related to the school day for students and communicating that with the parents, but also it's a place to host your curriculum, lesson plans and things like that. I'm not sure it's what we need or what we need soon. So very investigative, very hesitant to jump onto anything, especially with a price tag. So we're just, we're seeing what the others are doing and seeing whether it would suit our needs or not. I know many of the high schools throughout the state are using it, especially where with standards-based learning, more transparency between school and home needs to happen. So parents know what their students are exactly working on or targets or learning goals. But again, it's in the investigative stage for us. Is it like Infinite Campus though? Some of it? It is some like, it can be used like Infinite Campus for some of the reporting, but it is much more complex. And it allows for a lot more data, like I said, you know, sentence writing as far as learning objectives, assessment data, report cards could be in there. There's more. But, you know, because I also can see from a parent perspective what Infinite Campus can offer through the Noble system, I don't know that it is necessary at this time. So I am just very much keeping eyes open and leaving it at the investigative stage at this point. Much rather let somebody else work the bugs out and not incur any cost. So one of the things in the teacher meeting that we're working on is being able to address and communicate with each other as well as helping students communicate with each other. The P-I-R-A, the Pyro, example in my report talks about how to address things. Ken, when it came to the teacher meeting, also talked to the staff about trying to address concerns and issues and any problems you may face at the lowest level possible. So I'm finding it's very important for the staff to have these skills, which is a better way of communicating and solving issues and addressing, you know, even if it is a behavior of a kid in a classroom or cafeteria, that they communicate in a way that is effective about the facts and less emotional or personally driven.
I guess maybe Kevin can explain how he wanted the administrative reports to come to us, you know, because some of them weren't in our workshop. So, you know, about having data and then looking at the data.
So basically the way I see it, which I still think we're, we can't be there yet because of needing a strategic plan. So kind of the way I sort of see it, once the school has a strategic plan, the question is when you look at the key departments, it would make sense for each department to have key goals which are helping advance the school's strategic plan. So once all those pieces are in place, that would be key. So I think the first step is actually getting, and that's actually the thing that's your thanks if I missed it, is where are we in the state of what are the school's strategic goals? Then, once those are clear, I think each of the departments can sort of establish within that. So say for example, Trish, there are two or three goals that will help events, the school goals. Until that school strategic plan is in place, it'll be hard for the administrative department, the other departments to do that. Which is why I think it's really, really key, we have a strategic plan. We need to be goal-oriented.
I think from that last meeting that we had, that's where we are at right now, right? We're in the gold sending stage at this point, correct?
Yes. It's part of most everyone's agenda in their meetings, it was part of Tricia's agenda for her team of new teachers today. It's on my blockboard in there to, as I'm starting to look at, hopefully in the next few days, the gathering of the different goals from the different department heads and lead teachers. One of the people, what we just, what we determined is that, and she'll talk about it in a minute, that we really need another sort of internal catalyst for the teachers, who happens to be a teacher who really believes in this and that. So we're suggesting that Kristen take on the role of instructional strategist. It's teacher teaching the teachers, and it's, she's very enthusiastic, I'm going to talk about that. It's all part of this package that we're finalizing.
And I see it sort of as a continuing process, the conversation's getting more and more focused.
Right, but I mean, I think from my perspective, the administrative reports, I'm reading them and I didn't want them, you know, said to us verbatim and lose time because we were hoping to have time with student-driven activities here. And so that was the other thing, is you can write everything you want to write and then we were saying, pick and choose what's, you know, at the top of your list that you want stated, especially in a public meeting. But we're, we're reading everything else.
And the other thing was that there might be something on it you might not mention that we will have read about in Kennedy Quarter. That was, I think, another thing that we had discussed. But as far as the strategic plan goes, I felt like the last meeting that we had was probably as productive as any meeting that I went to at the Strategic Planning Group. For the first time, I felt like, all right, we're really moving now. Because there's so much of it that has to be preparatory and work before you can get to that point. And then when you get to the place where you can say, okay, now here we go, we're setting goals, we're going to be setting some dates and then setting some deadlines, some goals to work, deadlines to work towards and see how we measure ourselves along the way. So I felt like, I don't know how everybody else at the committee felt, but I felt like that was probably as productive to a meeting than I am at all. As productive a meeting as we've had.
Is there a projected timeline that definitely in place or how long is that?
As I said in my preamble, I'm going to make sure for the next meeting that it's as complete as we can as at that stage. There may be some rooming over a bit more of some things after that, but we should be giving you, delivering the product that shows our combined interest in moving forward. So hopefully that at the next meeting will cover many of the questions.
So substantive.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. So did you want more clarification on the instructional strategist position?
Do you have a job description?
She's already communicated we need to start data digging, so we're going to start doing that.
It's 10.4 minutes.
Would anyone like to, if you can bring it, look at the job description that was put together?
I gave, I gave copies.
You gave it here.
You gave copies, oh, is it in a little pile? Okay. All right.
Oh, I got it.
You have to wake everybody up.
I'm trying to listen and I think I'm a special one. I suppose I could.
The only thing I would sort of just say about the instructional strategist is just, again, I don't know when, but I'd be more than happy to help out in any way in the sense of just talking with Kristen and then what she's doing here is what I train people to do. So if there's any way I can help out maybe.
I would appreciate it.
If you want chat and resources or whoever's going to be happy to help out there.
So it's a win-win for us. She and I have been working on things together already. We've been sharing a lot of the discussion of the staff development. As I said, the bottom line, these are not, of course, every activity, every detail that'll go into the overall work. But the bottom line is that at the end of the year, a system of planning, measuring and accountability will be in place for using the assessment data to drive instruction. Which means even if, you know, the switch goes through to a smarter balance for the next round of standards-based testing down at the state level, it'll still fit into this process. It's not based on a single assessment. And, you know, again, through discussions, Kristen has begun to chart out an entire staff map of staff development. So who's been trained in what, who's attended what, who's been observed in putting their training into practice? So, you know, it will truly be a chart of progress. And so I will be able to always stay on top of, you know, should a new teacher be hired or somebody be sick? I can see they've missed this training or they had this training, but I have not yet seen the classroom lesson plans that back up, that they've made the improvements. I don't have assessment data that says that they're meeting their own standards. So it's really about the two words that I started this year off with, my staff, and that is transparency and accountability. That it really needs to be measured every step of the way. And, you know, if the staff can see this chart, they can also see where they need to head next for staff development, for training, for, for that kind of support. And if they're stuck somewhere along the line, if they're stuck at a certain level and need support, you know, that's where we'll also intervene.
And I know, it wasn't in your report, but I wanted to tell you how much I appreciated your sending us the copy that your two teachers sent home to parents. That was awesome. That was very impressive. It's great to see people are already thinking, forward-thinking and moving ahead in the right direction.
Yes.
It's great to have the parents get to know what to expect and what's happening and how kids are being assessed and so on. I think getting material out like that to parents is terrible. I think it's great that they're doing that already.
Thank you. That again resulted in our divide and conquer early release afternoon. So, you know, as I said in the email, they're going to use the fifth grade progress report at this time. They're adapting the fourth grade to meet the fifth grade because it already reports out in that same fashion. Also, with your other material, I gave a sample. We are, we'd be working on developing the report card to do the same thing. So that, you know, already those teachers are very enthusiastically, you know, working on this. It should have been a Camden sample. So just, again, the standards-based is, is really about being much more transparent about every skill that is being measured for a child's success. And it just, it needs to be, it requires a lot more work on the teacher's part. But it is, it's meaningful work. And both Brenna Whitney and Sandra Patrick are two of the teachers who are embracing this extra work to, to really impact the student learning. So that'll go out, the letter will go out with our support informing parents. It is a change, but I think it's a change for the better because of the communication and the clarity. Very exciting.
I thought I'd start somewhere, I'd like to talk about, you know, the late bus, the engine coming back. Do you have anything about it, anything more about it? About reporting it, we all told, we probably haven't had a chance to run it though.
We, we started putting it in place, I actually have not heard anything back. But thank you for the reminder, I'll, I will definitely check in then.
It didn't sound like Doug's response that, that the administration at the high school thought it was going to be a very successful venture, did it?
It was hard to hit. The, the different times of kids staying after school with a teacher versus staying after school for a sport were very different in their ending times.
Couple, we're still on the progress report?
We have one today.
I do want it. I do. So a couple things, one is, I love it, so just a clarifying question is regards to, so the progress, the fifth grade progress report we're seeing here, what you're stating is that this will be, what will go out to fourth and fifth grade for this coming progress report?
That's correct.
In this department.
Yes.
I can also speak just to the board, being the parent of a fourth grader who has Brenna Whitney. Communication's been awesome, just the standards spoken, so they really, really appreciated this grade. The, so two, I've got a couple things in my head. One question, not even somewhat a question, well, two, one's a question. I think the question. One is, since I think the way you put it in the email that this is a pre-pilot, but because this is new, what I would love to see is that there's going to be a letter going out with this, but what I think is really essential, because I think the communication here is critical. I think parents' understanding of a shifting report card can be maybe hard to predict. I think it'd be really good to have some sort of vehicle to get feedback from parents, what's clear, what's not clear, so that parent, because this is a communication tool to parents, I want to know what parents are thinking about. What, what's not clear, they don't know what we're going to find out, if the transparency is being affected as we ask them, what do you understand, what don't you understand? So I'd love to see some sort of data collection in regards to this pilot so that it can inform the pilot when it happens and then the pilot can inform the others. I think it can just be something simple.
A small question here.
At the end of the, is it possible something to tear off?
Yeah, or maybe with the progress report saying this is, we're trying, we're trying to move you, move towards standards, stays moving, I don't know, but something, what's clear, what's not clear, what questions do you have?
It could be included as a part of the letter that's going out to the parents anyway.
Are you saying after it's filled out and used?
So when I'm the parent and I see my daughter's report card come home, progress report come home, progress report is a report card with it as a feedback form. Because I think a lot of times too, aren't they supposed to get signed? So with the signature, so maybe on the signature sheet is the actual questions that are going to be.
That's the only way to tell them that.
Yeah, exactly. The other piece, and, you're going to kill me for saying this, but I'm going to throw it out there because it's a method to my madness, just because I've seen so many standards-based progress report presentations.
This is good, I like this, I can understand.
That's great. And I love what I'm seeing here. I think a key confusion that parents have, the idea will move to standard, the idea is to be clear. But calling something a standard doesn't make it clear. The only thing that makes a standard clear is to know what actually that statement represents. So for example, and I don't think it has to be on the report card, but I think some parents would, but I think it's really helpful. For example, let's say I'm a parent and I'm reading writing content and my child gets meets. I still don't know what meets means. I still don't know, I don't know what a be means, I don't know what meets means. But if I could go to the website and actually look, look up a sample of fourth grade writing or third grade writing and see what a sample looks like, if we could have exemplars of proficient work that we could look at, then I could easily understand what kind of problems, you know, if my, if my child's meeting in math, these are the kinds of problems that should be answered. If my child is meeting in writing, this is the kind of tech. It doesn't have to be that complicated, there can be a few things here, but it gives parents some sort of way to gauge. Because then if there's a meets and my daughter, let's say my, my son or daughter is not meeting, I can look at my daughter's writing and the sample and be like, oh, I see a difference here. That's meaningful. So I'm wondering if down the road, not right away, but that might be something people start thinking about is how can we have it defined and help people understand, help parents understand what a meets actually means versus not meaning. Make sense?
It does make sense because I'm a parent who has also asked, well, why, why'd you only get a C? And the student says, I don't know.
But you have an explanation thing.
Right, but.
Grandchildren already get this kind of report card. And the teacher always.
The narrative helps a lot. The teacher has identified, you know, he is getting a meets in multiplication of two-digit numbers. However, he's still showing a weakness in, if the narrative does the explaining, then that's great. If the teacher does not always do the narrative thoroughly, then we're back to again presumptions of what that symbol for the grade means, whether it's an A or an M or whatever, it's really not the point. It's, it is the clarification behind it.
And it helps empower.
Having straight As is the point. Something people should strive for.
Understanding as completely as possible is the point. Mastering the skill is the point. A student getting an A in every class, in every high school that I know, never mind the elementary schools, just high school alone, does not guarantee that the child understood all the material.
No, no, I'd have to say back in the 1970s, an A was an A.
But, but we're not there anymore.
Right, right, and they don't have to know anything.
Well, like a good example is a few years ago, like, Sia's report card came home and she did well in writing and she got an 11. I have no idea what 11 was. It was good!
Because she was excited.
But, yeah, but she didn't care. But for example, if I could go on and say, so here's K through A and here's a sample of, it's not hard to do. This is what professional kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade writing looks like. And, okay, so now let's just make it for kids in, kids in second grade, but writing like a fourth grader or like, I can look at the fourth grade. But writing like a fourth grader or like, I can look at the fourth grade sample and say, I can see where he or she is on this continuum. I have a vision ahead. Okay.
I like that.
It's grounded something.
The letter grade A does not guarantee that your student. That's right. I'm sorry. It just is. And it bothers me because when we're looking at real capabilities, you know, if you're a teacher that is, you show up and don't bother her, she gives you an A, that has not measured the success. But on the child's report card, you don't get that background information. It has to be clear across all teachers and all schools. I gotta stop.
So the question, so to summarize, it's a question I just went throughout. Some of these, I don't think you can do it for all, like a narrative, I think a lot of times is great. But to, and again, this might be something, again, go back to strategic plan. There might be a strategic plan of moving standards based and Tricia might have a goal. Real, moving forward with progress based reporting and standards-based grading so that things are transparent. Something like this would be an objective to move towards transparency, which would move towards a strategic goal in the school. So the question I'd like with this is ask the teachers, what might be some of these indicators on the report card that we're reporting that we could actually generate some samples that parents would have access to on the website? And there could be a little thing, if you want to see what a meets looks like, go to ACTON website. Again, boom, it's drawing people to the website now, which is always a good thing and it's compelling that. I don't think you do it for all, so it's a question at this point is what could, which of these items could generate models that could be posted? My gut feeling is over the year, teachers could generate those examples there.
But I'm curious too, as to know, were the rest, were, the work that the two teachers did that we received, were those shared with the rest of the staff as well?
They will be. I sent it to you first. So that'll be shared with staff. We are actually planning on, I don't know how you, it's not a job fair, but the early release day, December 12, will be, for lack of better words, a show and tell. So all the teachers, there's a great number of teachers who are definitely moving themselves forward at different paces. And so there'll be an opportunity in December to demonstrate, to model, to show, to share with each other what progress each one has made so that they can all learn from each other. So you know, as it gets closer and it gets, you know, more defined, that is the goal, December 12, the early release day. We will be able to have teachers share with each other their successes and what things they've tried and maybe what things that didn't work out, what they learned from it.
It's a craft fair.
It is. It is a teacher's craft fair. So again, even that, that transparency between teachers of putting themselves out there and saying, listen, I'm giving this a shot. And it's really, it's exciting. You know, as hard as it may be sometimes, it's a really exciting time to be in education.
December 12, you said?
December 12.
What day does that come?
It's Thursday, I believe.
Thursday?
No, where are you then?
I don't know.
Well, I guess it'll make a good video for you. So I'm really excited. A lot of things are going on.
Okay.
So this discussion that Kevin, we just had here with Kevin, what do, do we discuss this again now as far as moving forward and taking action on something? I think that's, I think that's a fantastic idea.
I think what's happening is Kevin is making, if I understand, if I understand it right, Kevin is making suggestions and recommendations for things that might be implemented into these plans as they develop and into the goals as they develop. Maybe even some follow-up to the, to Brenna and.
Yeah, so I guess that.
To the things that are actually going home to parents every fourth time.
Yeah, so the first one regards to the feedback, I think that's got to happen. If we're going to, if we're piloting something, I want data because I want to know if it's successful. If we're going to pilot something, we're not going to collect data and make the pilot move. So I think that's, I think that has to happen. So maybe that's something we can react to. The other one is, I think it's, I think the work piece is having the models, the examples if it didn't work. I do think it's an essential element. I see most schools not doing that.
It's long-term.
It's a big, I want to be sensitive to the fact that it's work. I'm already talking people's work schedules where I'm sure they're really full. So it's down the road, I think that's something that has to happen, but I have no idea the timeline. So again, I will post it out there as a challenge. If they're doing the work, something to be thinking about. Because that's something where if we can at least just suggest and put it out that that's something on the radar maybe from down the road, as teachers are generating student product, they can start collecting. So then that might make it easier.
These teachers do have binders of evidence. Again, that's the other piece of this like portfolio building in their classroom for the students. So getting to that evidence is really, is not going to be difficult. However, you know, again, one of the challenges that education faces, I'm going to grade a paper, I'm going to give feedback on a paper and somebody says, well, this is a fourth grade level paper. I might disagree. So we really have to have that dialogue amongst ourselves too, to calibrate saying, yes, this really is an excellent example of a fourth grade expectation and a fourth grade sample of that expectation being met. Then you can put it on as exemplars. But there's been many times, I know even when my own students, when I was teaching sixth grade and my own boys would be in sixth grade, and I would say, your teacher gave you what grade on this? And I would totally disagree with the quality of the paper.
So that means, that's what I mean, the quality has gone down.
Well, and not always.
What they accept.
Expectations are not as high.
But then more than, it's not consistent. So one teacher's A is another teacher's C. And that's what we're trying to eliminate. So what Kevin is talking about, if we have this agreed upon exemplar.
Yes.
It grounds everybody. Your A might be different than my A, but if this is the work that's meets, doesn't matter who you are, I think, this is where we could orient all of this.
So Kevin, are you comfortable, we really need to vote on this, right? Are you comfortable just sharing this information?
I'm playing a seat at this point. So yeah, there's no, no vote.
There will be feedback and I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll write up some sample questions. You're already thinking of a few in your head. I'll email you. Do I not know this? And I'll make sure that attached to the letter that is going out with the progress report, we have a feedback.
And I can say what's clear, what's not clear, what questions do you have?
All right then, let's move on to.
Thank you. Sorry for that lengthy conversation, but I think this is, I'm excited by this because I think it's really the direction.
Joy.
Okay, well, my report is brief.
We. It's in here somewhere. It was in the packet.
We had three ACTON elementary students who participated in the alternate assessment. That was over last year, we received the results. And we had one student who received, accomplished or achieved proficient in reading and math and two proficient with distinction in reading and math. So we're really delighted with that. And we received the results and sent home the information to the parents and of course filed all that. So that was my little, the data report.
Good data.
Also wanted to let you know that, you know, we've been working hard and we've already, or at least at the writing, had 16 special ed meetings for students who either were evaluated or had an annual review of their IEP. And let's see, seven of those meetings involved acceptance of newly enrolled students, although we did lose four in the transfer of. And also, you know, I updated the enrollment that I had sent you earlier in the school year. So we have 50 students identified kindergarten through grade eight. So I think that's all that I need to report.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, Ryan, and I haven't checked my email regarding how many students do we have enrolled right now?
She completed that.
You mean total students? Have you had it?
I have it with me.
Okay.
Just so that you know, Mrs. Stanton asked Ryan Pies for the current enrollment number. She did provide those, I chalked them so that she.
Was the total?
Total in the building, let's look at that. The building is 202, but we have three outer district placements at K8 and two in 912. So it's 202 in the building plus three is 200 classes.
What about homeschooling?
Homeschool's on that list too.
So we're talking about special education population.
That seems.
The only thing I did after I saw this, I'd like to pass something else out. I've got what's called an enrollment chart, the next six years are active. If kindergarten entrants stay at 19 per year, and I'm not saying they will, but over the last few years, 19 is close to the average. If they stayed at 19 each year, this is what would happen to your class numbers and your total building. And I'm not suggesting that we have a crystal ball that says it'll only be 19. If you look at the last three years, you went 19, 32, 19 in the entrance. 32 is so different than 19 that the world would help us decide what our next five years will be.
Does anybody have any other questions for Joy? On our special ed report? Okay then, let's go on to our technology report.
Anyone need a copy?
I'm not in my pack. Why have the report? One of the quotes I couldn't get and the other one I got.
I'll do a brief overview of our school. What's on the report is I've sat in on Vision, I've sat in on the Educate workshops. There's a lot going on in this school, a lot of development, a lot of progress and progression. So we have a lot on our plates, standardized report cards, testing, gathering the data with Kristen and using that data to make, you know, action. So there's a lot going on here in this school. My report, I just got a free couple of things and I'm, big projects or goals that I'm working on. Everybody's concerned about the surveillance on, especially on the bus parking zone. However, the worst concern about the playground as well. So I received quotes, we received some quotes on getting cameras set up in the playground so we can get adequate viewing of the zone. Cameras set up in, over by the bus stations, we can get access over there. And then relocation of camera in the school so we get a better picture. We're adding additional cameras in schools. We're missing, you know, we're eliminating black. That quote came in over $10,000. Because of a lot of it is we have to excavate cabling out to the playground. We got two cameras, we got to put a pole down for the cameras, make sure they're not vandalizable or, and then tap that into our current equipment along with running special cabling across from the building to the garage. So that kind of came in as a huge number. To just put cameras in for the bus lot, make sure those aren't vandalized and that lot isn't destroyed, it's going to be a little over two grand. It's just for standalone surveillance camera monitoring system that'll be housing the garage, independent from what we currently do. So those are our two, two numbers on the table for surveillance upgrades or expansion. So then, you know, you're going to take into consideration, do you really need the playground?
From the building, from that garage, if the camera's up on that peak, can it look into the playground?
No, it's really, you're going to need like a, yeah, seaford, you're going to need, to get an adequate shot in the playground, you're going to need something in the middle of the playground. You're going to need more than one camera too. You're going to need much in this way, much in that way. If you get both sides, it's a pretty big zone area. And in order to get that in place, you need to run cabling to that location.
Right, but I was thinking just at the back door where the kids go out to the playground, there can't be a camera there just facing.
Trees, there's trees, but yeah, we were initially thought of that too, but there's trees in the.
All on the paddocks.
You're just going to get a shot of the trees and you're going to get bad.
Well, it was more so, it wasn't so much to look at kids or, it was more so to see if a vehicle passes by and the camera. You know, that's what I'm thinking more so. So we would catch something that's, you know.
I think the other thing that might be helpful to the committee and I, you know, I've talked to Ken, I don't know if you've had a chance to view the system or not that we currently have in place. And I know that we've got some new members on the committee now. It might be helpful to just give them a demo of how the system that we have in place, how it works, to give them an idea of what you can actually see and retrieve from the footage.
I wonder if, has any thought been given to if the bus company is at all interested in helping to pick up any of the costs for these facilities for the bus area? I wonder if they would be.
I know that, I know that the buses all do have self-contained alarm systems on them. I was talking with one of the drivers last week and they have, they have security systems on the bus so that if the buses were, you know, tampered with, the alarms immediately sound. But there's nothing.
Yeah, you would never know who the vandal was.
We're concerned about the actual lot, the land. And he's noticed trash, debris, donuts in the parking lot.
You know, it's.
Fire.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's like Mike said, it's like the cameras, additional cameras, what it's doing is it's eliminating those areas that cameras that we have in place currently don't catch. You know, we have a number of areas in the building. We took them out there in the best possible places for the number of cameras that we had. And, you know, we knew when we put the system in that, you know, it was going to be a little bit of trial and error as far as the possibilities of relocating them, just remounting them in certain areas, you know, faced on the angle and, you know, the capability of the cameras.
Dead zones.
We could look at this in the budget session.
You kind of a question for Strahden, is there this problem that's, is there been an issue that we're trying to solve or be brought?
No, when we did the walkthrough on that for stay of school and I personally didn't know that there wasn't a camera facing that way, which I thought there was. And the whole idea is because, you know, vandals go out to there. That was, one of the main reasons why we got cameras in the first place is something, somebody was on the roof and somebody was out in the back. And you can't see it and it's not monitored and, you know, this is all our property. I don't want it ruined and I want to catch vandals doing bad things. Yeah, protect our ground there. And I didn't know that and then he's, you know, and then I just learned tonight about, I know even about the bus area, but that's true. That's not even watched.
So I wonder, since we're coming up to the winter season anyway, like we just include this, this would be part of the budget process.
Right, but we wanted to investigate how much it would be, the this or that, and then they said you have to expand the system, so that cost.
Any questions? Do you want to go 10,000 or 2,000?
So I think that my suggestion would be keep this, discuss it in the budget. Because with winter coming, we wouldn't be able to really install and get you selling this spring.
Especially outside some kind of big ground.
Is there any vandalism out there in the buildings or buildings?
No, this was like two, three years ago.
We haven't had anything real recent.
Was there any surprise or something?
I mean, the standalone system would be something that you could consider, you know, or it's a $2,000 item.
Yeah, but I like the idea of contacting the bus company and saying, you know, would you like to help pay for the surveillance of your buses?
Certainly wouldn't hurt.
I mean, it's just, you know.
This is a grant out there.
We don't have to be dependent on their answer whether we do it or not, but it might be.
Can you bring us up?
I mean, why not? At least bring it up. So, so would that surveillance out there, the 2,000 would be for the bus area? And also would that encompass the garage? And also would that encompass the garage?
Well, the garage is kind of already covered.
It's covered?
Covered, nearby camera. That would be the bus area. I think the quote was four cameras, so I'm sure we can move those around. The situation covers some black spots and dead zones. It's a lane to the wire.
Is this something, is this something that you guys are trying to, like, get in place, this small package right away? Or is this something that can wait for the budget season, which means it won't happen until next year? How, you know, how pressing, how...
I don't think it's pressing. I think, you know, we should budget for it.
I don't, yeah, I guess I wouldn't consider it pressing because we have taken such a number of proactive steps already. We've got updated lighting, I just added another light on the bus parking lot as kind of another proactive approach. We've got an alarm system in the garage. It's not a camera system, but it's a security system. I mean, we're moving, we're moving in that direction. So I guess out of the rationale behind it was continue that proactive approach and, you know, look at those areas that we discussed, those, those black areas that aren't currently covered. And keep moving forward.
Judy? Another thought is you didn't have police before. We have twenty-four hour seven sheriff now. They caught over fifteen people that were breaking into camps just because someone was... So they're really doing their job, and they're here all the time. I know some people were not too happy that he's out here catching people speeding past the school every morning. He'd probably catch a lot of us, but they're really doing a good job.
How you doing, Mike?
I'm going back to the state.
Isn't that a grant, a two pounds?
Uh, it's, yeah, we got a grant from the federal government, and Acton pays twenty, Chapley pays twenty, and then the federal government pays forty-eight. And we've got that for three years. Then we have to decide what we wanna do after that.
Right, so I don't think people know all that, I think.
Yeah, they do, they had two women, they voted on it.
I know that, but how many people were at the meeting?
All right, the fifty people who voted, so...
No, there was, that night, that night there was a hundred and twenty-five people there. And then fifty of them got out, walked out, and the other fifty vote for four hundred thousand dollar fire truck. So they were there for the twenty thousand, but they didn't care about the four hundred thousand.
But next time around, will it be like a warrant in town meetings?
What's that?
When it comes out?
When the four-year contract is up, yeah.
Right, and they get on the warrant.
Right, but there's possibility of getting the grant again at that time. But they're definitely doing their job. I mean, they caught people in the Acton breaking into the camps. And one case was very good because they actually set the bed on fire in the house before they were leaving, and they caught the kids there. So, you know, it's just, and, you know, and I know the summer people are thrilled because, you know, the response they're getting. So he's really doing a good job, and then when he's not here, because we have the contract, we no longer have state police. So there is a sheriff in town between Chapley and Acton twenty-four hours a day. We don't just get the twenty hours a week.
So summer people, giving some bank to give up?
Exactly, exactly.
So they can't use the school as an argument anymore?
Just one other thing that I wanna mention before we leave, Mike's, I don't know if anybody has any other questions for Mike White's report, but I, I think it's important to note. I know at the beginning he said, we were at the mission meeting, he was at this planning meeting, he was at that planning meeting. I think it's important to recognize that Mike is involved in all of these, he's got a part in all these things. He's pretty, he's pretty spread out, and he's a pretty capable guy for keeping everybody, trying to incorporate all the ideas and all the information that comes into him to get it in some kind of technology form. And I think the board needs to give him some kudos for that.
Can I just ask a question before we leave the outside grounds here? We, on long-term planning, we have been talking about new ceiling up there. And I noticed it was done, Ken, and you sent an email to me, and I was asking how it was done, and you responded with an email, I don't know if you wanna share that and say, you know, tell how it was paid for.
The, we talked about it a little bit in my presentation, I talked about the asphalt ceiling that was done by Jim and by Andy. Andy really had his own time, and Jim was overtime, but when you saw how much they accomplished by one thirty in the afternoon on that bright sunny day, took a Saturday out of their life and did a wonderful job of sealing the path of park and striping parts. I called, I called his cell phone about three o'clock and said, you work hard enough to home. He'd already, he'd already knocked on because he started too early. But now they're just hoping that there's another couple of good weekends of weather left in the fall season to finish it.
And what about this coming weekend?
We're talking about saving, better part of five thousand more.
Yeah. We're advertising, talking about...
Right, so we save this money so we get these surveillance, right?
I did a lot of math before I committed, and it's, you know, it's, it had to be done that way. I mean, there was the amount of money potentially saved.
We had left that meeting Tuesday before, we were talking about going on to bed, the long-term planning. It drove by, I think it was Monday morning, and I come back home and I'm like, oh, my God.
Thank you, Andy, for stepping up so well.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay, now we'll have your report.
My report will be given to you orally this evening because I'm very happy to say that I had a few days off, a little hour and hour, and it has been great. But a few things to follow up on. Ken touched on the fact that we had completed a hiring process for the new night custodian. And as a result of that process, I'm recommending Dwayne would be hired for that position. We had a number of applicants. We scheduled two interview sessions, and the committee was unanimous in recommending Dwayne as the chosen candidate. So I don't know if we needed an action on that from the committee.
I'll have it later.
Tell me if they have to.
This coming weekend, Athletic Director has scheduled a pretty large-scale soccer event, which will take place on Saturday and Sunday, which I will be happily assisting her on my weekend. But she puts a lot of effort into this, and it's a big event. And one thing I like to see is I like to see people from other communities come in and see what our facility has to offer. And it's always reflected very positively on Acton School, so I will do it.
Is this at this weekend?
Yes.
It's a soccer jamboree.
Right, I see the signs when they put it up.
And the Acton is putting on the concession stand, so they will get all the profit, Acton Sports will get all the profit from the concession stand. There's a lot of effort on our Athletic Director's on part to coordinate that. And I appreciate the fields being in such a condition. I agree with Andy, it's always great to hear people's comments.
This is the one they use, that they have each year, that like parts of it are in Sanford?
Yeah, it's all over the place. And I don't know how many games are being played, but it's like an astronomical number of games.
Thirty or something, that's crazy.
I don't know how they schedule it and how it all falls into place, but it does. But it is a very well-organized event, and it's a lot of people, so...
So you're talking about the concession, the concession at Shaw Field? Or here?
Here. Holly's giving Tracy access to two coolers to keep things cold so they can wheel things up to the concession stand and keep it running. And all profits are gonna go back into Acton's sports program.
And that's, that's the first time they've done that too.
Right, that's a new thing.
That's additional planning and undertaking that Tracy has done. And like Trish said, it benefits Acton School, so it's a good thing.
This is the paperwork, a lot of the parents, the first time see the fields out here in Acton, and they leave here amazed, really very impressed that Acton School does a lot.
The other exciting thing that's happened in the last week is our new floor machine has arrived. This was something that I had budgeted for, for this year. It's a new auto scrubber, and it is something that was, you know, it was, it was time to replace the old one. And the new one has got features on it that is gonna make floor care much more efficient. It's got better capabilities as far as refinishing, and also as well as the daily cleaning of the building. So we had one machine that's roughly about ten years old now that has been serviced, is in good condition, and we're gonna move that down to one end of the building that's not, doesn't require as much use of that machine. And then the new machine is gonna be taken into the junior high end in the central part of the building where most of the floor care for that machine takes place. And I'm very confident that the machine is going to do a good job.
Something like that for...
That machine was about six thousand dollars. I shopped, I went through three or four different vendors, I got prices, literature, I did some research online before we committed to it. We actually bought it from Cleanorama up in Westbrook. And before we committed to the machine, we had a sales representative come down and give us a demonstration of the machine. And he came down when Jim was here, our day custodian, because I wanted one of the custodians to actually get the experience and have some input, you know, into, you know, the features of the machine to make sure it was gonna serve as well. And we were in agreement that it was a very good machine, and the company's got a very good reputation as far as, you know, the service of it and title tip, but we're pleased. And we've been kind of joking because all the people in the brochures while they were cleaning had big smiles on their faces, and so... Trying to get the guys really pumped and excited about washing floors. No, no seat.
No seat, yeah.
It's not as enviable?
To stand behind.
No drink over.
But then the last thing I'd like to mention, and it's already been mentioned tonight, but I'd like to give credit a great deal of kudos, for lack of a better term, for the strategic planning meeting, because Ken put together an agenda for that meeting that not only kind of brought himself up to speed, but I had missed a couple of the last meetings, and it's brought me back up to speed and kind of got me back in the loop. And as Judy said, it, it really was a, it was a productive meeting because it was bringing Ken up to speed, it was bringing all of us up to speed. And I felt in that hour and a half that we met, that we made some good progress and we've got a good direction as far as, okay, this is where we're at, this is what we've done, this is the next step, and this is where we're gonna, we're gonna go. It was more of a, you know, not just gathering information, it was more of setting the plan in place. So very good job as far as getting the agenda together and executing a productive meeting.
Speak to you?
Yes, yes, Ken. Guys are going in central office, Ken.
I'm a little bumpy, but no bad, we're getting there, we're burning.
Did you say the warrant was ready tomorrow?
Yeah, it's ready now.
Oh, okay, well, I don't know, maybe it's a Friday to tell me or whatever, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, but this would've been last Friday. And that's probably something that nobody has really mentioned either to either you or Crystal, but usually what happens is when the warrant and checks are ready, an email goes out to Jeanette and I, and says, and says that the warrant, the warrant and checks are ready, give them a sign in central office. And we'll usually respond to you either, you know, you know, being at a certain time or I'll be at a certain time, or something like that.
Well, they actually weren't done till five, or nine, so...
No, I know, but...
Well, then, we are looking for Wednesday. We'll consider, we'll consider this oral notification very, very good. But that's, that's kind of been the protocol in fact, because it's a reminder to us, even though we might know what we were supposed to be doing, it's a reminder to us that it is that week and that they're ready for us to come and do.
And then they also had printed out a sheet of paper with the dates on it because sometime in there, your school's closed, gotta come in on it. Have we got those papers? I don't know if that's...
That paper always just kind of went by the wayside with me because I depend on those emails that says, come in Monday and sign.
All right, okay, I don't care, I wrote them all down.
And you know it has to be up to us on Wednesday in order to meet the people that get automatic, you know, direct deposit, because the selectmen have to sign it on Wednesday so that the checks go out Thursday and then get to people's bank accounts on Friday. So, so we have to have it tomorrow so that we can sign it tomorrow too.
We'll make sure we get it.
Yeah.
Is it similar at all to anything you've done, Ken, like at the treasurer's office? A little bit different?
Yeah. It's kind of, I mean, I, one of the things, I guess I, I know you guys are, you're doing your strategic planning, but maybe something to throw in is, is your accounting software a little bit?
That was number two on my, my agenda. When you say that, are you talking about...
Something that doesn't require hamsters to run.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, are you talking about...
Well, just as an example, with NDI, which is a software you have...
Low and Down, right?
Yes, it's bucket-based software. So in other words, what happens is you input your data, whether it's variables or whatever, and it literally goes into a bucket. Once you post it, that bucket empties, and your totals go into your account manager. But you lose all your data. And the reason is, so it's a DOS-based driven software. And so, yes, I have seen it in nineteen eighty.
I'm very familiar with what you're talking about.
So, so for me, because like where I was before, we were using Blackbaud Financial Edge.
We pushed away from it at the Townsend when I was on the, uh, London, it was, it was terrible.
We went to Trio.
And even right now...
We use Trio into Town and Limerick. And Trio's good for really, you know, I, in fact, we implemented as a selectman, I, we implemented Trio while I was on, and I worked with, actually, Ron Smith, who's also your auditor, to implement it for the Town and Limerick. And I, and Trio's really good, I guess, for selectmen, Town and Limerick, it's government accounting. It's fund-based accounting, but it's not really what you wanna use a school for. I know Ken and I, we went to Stanford High School, and we looked at what Tyler Technologies, they have it as a pro-fund. And it's very similar to like Blackbaud and really the top of the lines, money counting. And Tyler Technology products basically have the majority of all the school partners in state, I think. Acton and two others, the only one.
I am not a fan of Low and Down, because they were absolutely awful.
I, Tom, I...
No, it's really helped the town.
We've talked about it for years.
This was the last, I know in the end of the year, the last several years since, since Trio's been in, at the end of the year, when they try to prove, they have quite a bit of difficulty merging the two programs together, Low and Down and Trio, just for that.
And I can see why, I mean, and another example is you had Donna, who's, who did really good, you know, as an infant to move forward. But again, because she was a week or two, or Diane, I'm sorry, Diane, Diane, I'm sorry. Donna has helped a lot, I hate not to be honest with you, but she didn't realize the posting situation would happen. And so part of the problem we're having right now is when you're doing your nine forty ones and you're doing your main purge, you know, retirement accounts. I don't know, I'm finding other ways to develop the data to make sure I have accurate reports.
It's not efficient. It's not efficient.
Nothing to look back at.
Efficient is probably not, it's more prevalent.
So is there...
So otherwise, you'd have to run two different systems so you can give them the data still. You'd have to have two systems up there.
Low and Down didn't even have fields that fit the Town and Acton or municipal, and it was, it went on for years, and it was ridiculous.
Well, I think one of the things that we find is, both Crystal and I, because again, we're both working in aligned, is what we see is we see a lot of Excel spreadsheets from there, all through the system, because that was the only way that they could try to somehow reconcile the data back. And it's, it's just very inefficient to do it that way as well. So I know Ken and I have talked about it, and I know I talked with Mike, I mean, we really, I would like to, like, research a lot of different, I have like five or six I've already started looking at, and I'm trying to find something that stays within, you know, a realm of our price tag, not looking throughout and spend the...
Would it be possible for the next reporting to have maybe some options to choose from? Again, this being outside of my, Ken, but it seems to be pretty funny. We need to be careful, particularly for the special season.
This was one of my worst fears when I arrived, that we wouldn't have adequate software, and it was so true. And it was so true. That's one of the reasons that I sought someone of Kim's caliber who could help me on that, who actually knew both sides. She knew the accounting side, she knew the Limerick town side, so that we could move forward. And it's happening just as I hoped it would. That's why we had the visit over at the Sandford School District. We learned so much about that, it made us even more uncomfortable.
Number two, number two on my report I never got to is, one of my servers is starting to get obsolete. It was purchased five years ago. And I'm requesting to enhance it so I can move forward. After our discussion this morning, we talked about maybe a long-term technology plan. Using, every year, every five years or so, I make sure our equipment is up to date, up to par, up to speed. Instead of, you know, purchasing 30 new computers for computer labs since, you know, people are kind of phasing that out anyway. Our computer lab's still good, our computer lab's still, you know, handling well. Why don't we put it towards where money actually is over there? And maybe start investing some of our long-term technology resources into that department, into the software, into their product. So we sat down and discussed that this morning and I think I'm on board with it.
The programs in Sanford that you went and visited, would they work in conjunction with Trio? Or at certain points at the end of the year when you have to approve and everything?
I would.
That's always been an issue.
Yeah, no, I really think that, in fact, one of the issues they had with the Sanford Central Office is they are in the same boat, only on a larger scale. They also have to match with the city of Sanford.
It's nasty.
It is now, yeah. So they have to prove out that as well. And they, basically what Lori had told me was they're not there 100%, but they're almost there. So I think what literally happens with these type of programs is they learn how to import and export and they merge so that the information will, you know, come together in the same areas. Which usually when you, like, back up, when I was with Wabham, we went from Sage to Financial Edge. And one of the first things we did was you consider key in everything. You exported out from the software and you created an import file and you imported the data without touching the data. So everything stayed accurate and managed.
Very important, though, this has to be. There's a reason everybody's leaving. I mean, it's, the data's there, everyone's left Lowdown data for a reason, all the municipalities and schools.
Here's my concern, if you get a new software, I would hate to see the town change from Trio right now because it really works for us. And we just had assessing, the townwide assessing. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You're not suggesting that Trio's no good for us? It is good for the town because that's what they designed it for, right?
No, I really like Trio.
Okay, for the town.
Like I said, for the town, it's one of the best.
Yeah, I agree, but it's completely different for the school.
What makes you talk about a program that works better within the school districts?
That'll tie into Trio because we just expanded our Trio with the town assessment.
That's not even a question, though, I don't believe.
Yeah, no. No, I definitely, what I was saying was, I believe that the software that Tyler Technology has, I believe Blackbaud, there's NetSuite, there's Intact, there's like five others. And I've been asking for information from all of them. And, you know, I just didn't want to put too much effort because I really wanted to make sure you guys were positive about it. But that would be definitely a key figure, you know, key aspect is to make sure that when we want to send information to the town that it's going to match what you guys are looking for. But it doesn't, it's more of a merge than we're here and seeing plate than it is one's going to take over the other. It's not like that. It's just that we want to say I can reconcile my records and that they reconcile with your records. That's what.
So what's the timeline for?
Next week.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Next week we can fix this.
Be careful what you ask.
I think what the board is looking at is that, you know, this might be something that we want to try to see if we can do something before the budget season because, you know, then, nothing would get implemented until next summer. So, you know. So if we can try to do something, so if you can get us some figures by the next meeting, or if you get them together before that, give it to Ken and just email them out to us and we can begin to. So we'll have something, a basis to start looking at at our next meeting.
Is wait to next meeting? It sounds to me that we want it faster on this, so just as a guess.
Thank you for going to that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
So you're going to stay now, right? What? She was leaving? No, we're just kidding.
What we're working on together too is we have the Smith audit report for the town and school combined. It was sent to us by Michelle on Friday. We have already got one error that's being cleaned out, one paragraph that's not really for Acton Town or Acton School. It just happened to be in their mock-up and so we put it in. But anything else that we see that we'll make that a cleaner document in the next few days will be helpful both to the town and to ourselves.
Was that part of the warrant?
No.
Oh, what Smith had wrote in his audit report?
Yeah, Smith assumed that we as a district had a particular feature that wasn't in last year's audit report. We don't have that feature in terms of a benefit that we provide. So if we don't have it, why put it in there? The data's just assumed that many schools have it.
Yeah, it was a whole paragraph on a deferred compensation plan that we don't have in the system. And they did highlight it to let it know that they added it in without. Because it wasn't a new one, so it's not something that happens.
Coming from district's work, that was all my responsibility, including preparing that report from page one to 62. I am pleased that we work so well with Michelle. That's her responsibility and ours. But that because of the size of the town of Acton, the size of the school district, the Smith company gives us a very good, we could call prior. And they really set it up for us based on the information we've given them. And it's God sent to us to have it that complete and that accurate without having to go, without having to develop every page or something.
So you worked with our supervisors there before, so you.
When, as a selectman for the Town of Limerick, we went through a stage where we actually, we actually went out and searched for you by any of them. We looked at many of them. Portland and Palmas and Candyland and. And I was very glad to work.
I drive right by their office in Limerick, so they can't hide.
Okay.
Welcome and nice to meet you.
Yes, it's nice to have you on board. All right, we don't have any presentation this evening, so does a long-term.
I have a question about that, though. When we're talking about the learning person, that this is staff and students coming, right? What communication went to that about that?
Well, I asked at the vision meeting and at that time, nothing had gone after the staff. I would be glad to do that, I offered to do that.
It was part of our, when we had our teachers meeting, it was part of our student event, it was well fleshed out. And several people came to me with new things, but I just knew we couldn't have anything tonight. The next meeting will have some.
Well, we had originally asked Tracy about doing November. She had talked about doing November with her post office thing. I don't know if that's still in the works or if something else is being planned. Doesn't matter, we just had cited that as one good example.
Yeah, we encourage staff, you know, some may maybe not be able to come back out at night, but they could set up a video presentation. So Ken and I together, you know, he went over the parameters and, you know, encouraged. We talked about there was more than one way to share what their students are learning. So they definitely have the information, just being ready.
For what it's worth too, as the communication goes on, because I don't want it to be prohibitive, I really want to invite them to be known and it's a sincere invite that we want to see teachers and students here. But definitely for them to see it as an opportunity. Because I think it's hard to find authentic opportunities to present in a formal setting. But it's seen as that, here's an opportunity in a formal setting. So from, you know, from whatever that entails, just practicing for tires or those sort of things that know the context, that just steps up.
And I think, you know, with what's happening in December, with the sharing of ideas, that it would seem as though from that, it would be several, share with the whole community at school today. That sounds like a great idea. Okay, long-term planning, you have anything for tonight?
Not the student.
Not me.
Policy committee has some things for some, that we'll be looking at under number nine, correct?
Yep. First reading for bloodborne pathogens policy. That was a request from Mrs. Wendell. There's a copy on the backside of this concussion policy. The procedure must be a universal procedure about what they do with bloodborne things. So that, have to attach that to this, that's in the policy book. You must have a book about what you do with.
Bloodborne pathogens. Oh, yes.
Training procedures.
Right. This will be the first reading of that. And also last meeting, Tracy Scully was here with concussion management procedure. Handled out a little brochure here and a page here for parents, guardian's signature, student's name printed. But we thought perhaps that where it says parent and guardian's signature, that the parent or guardian should also print. Because they're asking the student's name printed and also the student's signature. So you can read, so we'll add another line to that.
What's this?
This isn't a procedure.
Well, oh, you didn't get that probably last, this is, do you have this at all?
That was the attitude.
Well, anyway, this is the, this is the concussion policy, what you're reading here on this page here, the policy itself. And along with it was a procedure that she passed out. And we kind of implemented that procedure provision right away. So that.
Now we're following the policy.
Right, yeah.
That's the first read, right? So we're both on that, that's the first read?
No, we haven't got there yet.
No, we're in the policy committee, we're not that far yet.
Yeah, we get there. Negotiations committee?
Well, wait a minute, don't we have another one that was tapped on here? Tardy policy.
Tardy policy?
Tardy.
Tardy?
We're going to have tardy too.
So are we doing 9.3 then?
No, right now we're, well, we'll need to.
Right, but I mean.
There will be an adjustment to the agenda.
The tardy one is 10.3 of the agenda. Thank you.
Since you hadn't seen it before, it's on there, it's 10.3. If you want to change it, it's not really for first reading, but it's so simple. If you want it first reading, we can simply, if you look at that copy that you have, need to be updated from 8:15 to 2:35, to 8:10 to 2:30. That could be first reading as well because it's such a small change.
Yeah, I would do that.
Well, if it's an adjustment, it's, I don't think we have to like.
I don't think you have to do multiple readings.
I don't think we have to do the multiple.
No, we just have to do it. Read through the change.
Yeah, and just put it.
Vote on the change.
Put a date on it, it was changed.
Amended.
Okay, anything for the negotiations committee or will that come up?
We're meeting in two days. Wish us luck. Thank you.
You starting on the next contract, all right?
Yeah, this is before, I mean, 2016.
It's still four o'clock.
It's one in every clock. Little bit, the one.
What time is it? What time is it?
Four o'clock on Thursday.
Okay, then let's move on to new business. The first thing under new business is the appointment of Crystal Labbert as a payroll accountant.
Second, no, we're at nine. Unfinished business.
Oh, unfinished business, well, okay, here we go.
I know, just trying to move it.
First reading. I'll ask for a motion to accept the policy code GBGAA, bloodborne pathogens, for a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, in seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? All right, and I will also ask for a motion to accept.
Did I screw up? Yes. I just wanted to make a mention on something here, on bloodborne pathogens. It says in the third paragraph, on at least an annual basis. Now, if we went through all our policies, we would see these terms, annual basis, semi-annual, and not, I mean.
This has to do with OSHA, the occupational thing, that that's.
But do we do that? I just wanted to know, I guess.
Well, yeah, because every time something changes, you're notified through OSHA, right?
As far as like changes in the procedures?
Well, just the procedures and what they might want to do with the Kleenex or things like that.
Yeah, maybe municipal will notify.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, they would notify us of updates. The superintendent will notify the board of updates on at least an annual basis, really? How about when there's a change?
Don't you have a book in every office, or Carol Wendell's office or in your department, that talks about exactly what you're to do with exposures and?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I guys.
Right.
The custodians and I, the custodians, if I have a new hire, has to be trained within a certain amount of time.
I know, but does the board need to be notified of OSHA changes? There you go.
Exposing some report.
But it says annually, we have to be told.
So do you want to make a recommendation with updates as needed?
Yes. Can we do something like that, sorry? Can we, can we detract, I detract my, you know.
Your motion.
And you take away your second of the motion.
Updates as needed?
It's rescinded, I rescind my motion.
Rescinded.
You mean updates as needed?
As needed, I think. Updates as needed. I don't like when things are in my book that are annual, when it doesn't even happen.
If there's no trigger to make it happen, then we wouldn't be compliant and we're setting ourselves up to be.
So now I will make a motion to accept with the change, take out on at least an annual basis to as needed.
Second.
Okay, so moved in seconded that we change, that we accept that bloodborne pathogens policy for a first reading as amended with that one change. Any, any further discussion? All was in favor?
Do we do this thing?
Now let's go to number 10.
9.2.
I thought we just did that.
No.
I'll ask for a motion.
Hold on, there's just one change, I think it's just this typing error. Second paragraph, third, at the very last, it says participation in. I think it's participation is voluntary, is.
Yeah.
Third sentence, all the way at the end, to the right.
Third line, second paragraph.
The word in should be is.
There's a waiver period above adopted.
Oh, I didn't catch that.
She's really slipping.
I could slip on that. I thought it was part of my copier problem. Take that period out.
Okay, so then I will ask for, yeah, I'll ask for a motion to accept the concussion management policy for a first reading with those adjustments that we already mentioned.
So moved.
Second.
All was in favor?
Now we're tardy now.
No, now we're tardy.
Is it okay, go on to 10?
No, tardy policy.
I thought the tardy was further down.
We moved it to 9.3.
First reading?
First reading.
No, this is to amend the policy.
This is an amendment, yeah. So I would look for a motion, for a motion for, to amend the tardy policy to reflect the new bell schedule, which means that tardy would begin at what time? 8:10.
And then change 2:35 to 2:30. And then change two thirty-five to two thirty.
Okay.
Eight-ten. Yeah, what is the start of school then? Are you saying that's the first bell? Eight-ten? That's the late bell, yeah. See, they're still being dropped off at quarter of eight to eight o'clock. Buses are off by eight o'clock. Okay, buses will be by eight. So we're saying by eight-ten, all kids should be here. Okay. We do, we do announcements at ten, at eight-ten, and the kid classes start at eight-fifteen. We kind of did much right at eight-fifteen last year.
So then I'll look for a motion to just update that TARDI policy to reflect those new times.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. I think we're at ten now.
Yes.
Ten, number one.
Oh, wait, unfinished business?
That is.
What else is unfinished?
Clarify, something familiar at this meeting. So, where's, 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 where's? So going back to the data for the report card, I'm just wondering, when are, I should know this, but I don't, when are the progress reports coming up?
Friday.
So I would, I request that next time we have the meeting, we add to the agenda, if we can have the data, if we can actually look at the data, in front of the actual...
Data, data, of course you can. Opt your data.
That would finish.
That was unfinished.
That was. Thank you. So if you just add it to the next agenda.
I'd really like to know about the new business.
Yes, please, please, please.
Okay. Ken, I want you to do number ten.
I can read that. I'm recommending that we appoint Crystal Lambert as payroll and accounts payable clerk, thirty hours of reconfidential contracted employee, aligned with the Support Staff Association, in step fifteen, and benefits effective nine twenty-four thirteen.
I'll make a motion to appoint Crystal Lambert as the payroll and accounts payable clerk for thirty hours of reconfidential contracted employee, and aligned with the Staff Association contract at step fifteen, and benefits effective nine twenty-four thirteen.
Seconded by you, yeah? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Joy, would you like to address the next one?
Okay. Patricia Putnam is an ed tech, who is, her status right now is as ed tech two. She has been functioning as an ed tech three at the end of last year and beginning of this year. She's working according to the job description of an ed tech, has displayed or reported a job description as an ed tech three. She works with groups, she's one who attended the Lindner Mubell training, so she works teaching reading, she's working one-on-one, she's in and out of many different classrooms, and all of the ed techs are actually functioning at that, in that group, the same. So we're recommending that she be treated and compensated as an ed tech, raised to that, elevated to that level.
Okay, and does she have the...
She has the qualifications. Yeah, so she does.
What's the difference between two and three as far as sort of...
If you look at the...
Well, the big difference between two and three, if I'm correct, different on education, which is we can work with students and that sort of thing.
That's, that's...
It's credit hours, too, it's sixty hours for an ed tech two, and ninety hours for an ed tech three.
Thank you.
Is she, question, is she, she, you said she went to the training for the Mubell, under the single program? Is she actually using it?
And she has been using it as a sensible, and this is further advanced her training.
But it, will, is there other students that should be actually applying it with any type of, the lips?
Yes.
But she is using that?
I mean, they're using it as, they have expanded the sound sensible that, which is...
So they're using that to expand with this?
Right.
Cool.
So can I have a motion on ten-two? I'll make a motion to, for the promotion of Patricia Putnam from Education Technician Two to Education Three, effective ten fourteen thirteen.
Second.
Okay, then moved and seconded. All those in favor? So moved. Vote it down to ten-three. Okay. Ten-four.
Ten-four was the item that we are just amending the agenda to include, if you want to pass on some of the agendas, because there is a stipend attached to the work that we want Kristen Gallo to do, and it's a total of fifteen hundred dollar stipend for Kristen Gallo for her efforts as instructional strategist at ten hours per month, as per job description provided, and it's grant funded.
It's grant funded. So we just need to approve that she received the stipend.
I'll make the motion to approve the fifteen hundred dollar stipend for Kristen Gallo for her efforts as instructional strategist at ten hours per month, as per the job description provided.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve the stipend for Kristen Gallo for fifteen hundred dollars, as instructional strategist. Any further discussion?
It's grant funded, you said?
Grant funded.
What grant?
Title Two. All my, big money, you can use it as staff development.
Cool.
Okay.
This is a very aligned type cost in effect for that grant.
Maybe.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? So moved.
Thank you.
And ten-five?
I can read that, or Andy can read it. All right.
You will.
Appointment of Dwayne Wood as custodian, step three, support Staff Association, effective ten fourteen thirteen.
Now, we already have somebody last name Wood in this department. Are they related?
Yes.
What's the relation?
Brother.
Is the brother. Now, who was on the selection committee, or?
The selection committee was myself, Ryan Pease, Jim Wood.
But Jim, uh...
Jim is staying from participating in that particular.
He's qualified to contribute to...
Absolutely.
One of the things I like in visiting him is that his tech school training is a skill that he can help expand some work here. His tech school welded automotive or a small engine repair, things that can help us continue to do some things inside and do them faster than going out for contract work. And also that if he is skilled in those areas as we believe he is, he can help train the other people in the department to add to their skills.
Okay, motion for a promotion for ten-five?
Motion that we appoint Dwayne Wood as custodian, step three, support Staff Association, step three, effective ten fourteen thirteen.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Now I will look for a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion to go into executive session seven forty-five.
No, sir.
Oh, to discuss personnel issue.
Did somebody say?
No, sorry.
Oh, Jeanette did. All those in favor?